I'd like to call to order the Springbrough Career Education at the Warren County Career Center for October 11th, 2018. Roll call, please.
Anderson?
Yes.
Pat?
Yes.
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 Here.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there a motion to adopt tonight's agenda?
So moved. One second.
Roll call.
Anderson?
Yes.
Pat?
Yes.
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 Yes. One to approval of the September 12th, 2018 meeting minutes. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second. Roll call.
Anderson?
Yes.
Pat?
Yes.
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 Yes. 1.3 approval of the September 17th, 2018 spatial meeting minutes. Is there a motion to accept that? Second.
Second.
Roll call.
Anderson?
Yes.
Pat?
Yes.
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 Mr. President, under public participation, tonight we are here thanks to Rick Smith, Gary Patton, and the entire Warren County Career Center leadership team. And the, first of all, the meal beforehand was wonderful. Thank you again for your hospitality. But to get this board meeting off on the right start, we're going to turn the program over to Mr. Smith and to Mr. Patton, who have a short presentation. We actually have a Springbrough student with us tonight who will also speak to us. And we're going to have a little tour of some of the highlighted programs, as well as some of the new construction and the new innovations that happen at the Warren County Career Center. Mr. Smith, this board is down yours.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Well, thank you again for being here. It's certainly an honor to have a board meeting come to us. It is really important that you get to know us better because we can't be successful without the support of our home schools. And Dan had this great idea that, when I talked to him, I like to visit board meetings throughout the year. And Dan had the great idea that instead of me coming to you, why don't you come to us so that you can all see what we do here? Because probably for most of you, this might be your first time on our campus. And we certainly have changed in the last 25 years. We opened in 1976. So we've been around for a while, providing workforce development training for 42 years, fully on our adult ed program. And before I give it to Zoe to tell you a little bit about her or whatever, I just want to talk about how important the partnership is with our home schools. And, you know, we're blessed that we have such a great county. Warren County is a great place to be in. I started here 15 months ago. And Dan was one of the first ones that reached out to me, the superintendent. And Dan has been really instrumental in growing the partnership to the point where Springbrough has the highest growth in our district with students. We have probably 25, which is about 15% growth in Springbrough's students from last year. And a lot of that is because Dan champions for us on his campus. So we really appreciate that. And we also appreciate the support of Mr. Anderson, who represents you on our board. In a year from now, in 2020, Springbrough will have an opportunity to have two board members on our board because we have, we serve six schools and we keep it in odd number. We rotate every three years which one of our schools gets an extra board member. So in 2020 January, you'll have an opportunity to add another board member to us. So it's another good reason for you to be here and get to know us a little bit better. So I don't want to do all the talking, but I just want to let you know that we're growing. We've grown by about 30 students from last school year, and that's at the high school level. We're growing at Audi Green Tree, which is one of our satellites. You'll be seeing new programming out there. We're investigating new cybersecurity program. We're investigating other health programs. So just like Warren County is seeing a lot of growth, so is the Career Center. And again, a lot of that has to do with the support we get from our home schools. I'm always amazed when I go to a meeting or talk to someone how much the Career Center has affected their lives or their families' lives in this community. Our construction trade program is one that does a lot of things out of the community. They did the park project at, what is the name of that park, Gary?
Strickland.
Armco Park, yes. We did the concession stand there. That was a three-year project. And that's just one of our programs that gives back to our community by taking our students.
They also now build your administration building.
That's right. We built your administration building. And built ours.
And the baseball dugout concession building.
They're really everywhere. I mean, if something's been built in Warren County, we probably had a hand in it. But we're just very excited that you're here. You're in, you're staying, you're sitting in our restaurant. This is going to open to the public this month, the next couple of weeks. It'll be open during the school day, probably from like 11:00 to 1:00-ish, a couple of days a week. But we know how important it is for our students to have that hands-on opportunity. So we're excited about that. And I've said enough already. You're going to go on a little tour. But I want to turn it over to Zoe, who's going to tell you a little bit about her and her program. And I think you're going to stop the secret program. So Zoe.
I want to thank everyone for being here at the Career Center today. My name's Zoe. I just want to tell you a little bit about myself before I start talking about the Career Center. I have been going to Springbrough since kindergarten, preschool if I would have gone, you know? I've lived here my entire life. I have an older sibling who wished she would have come here and a younger sibling who's a freshman in high school right now and who's planning attending here. So it's, the Career Center is really a big part of my family. It's always been something that may have held some weird stigma around it, but I can tell you that it's completely false. This place is the best academic decision that I've ever made. My favorite part about the Career Center is the opportunities I've gotten while coming here, not just in my lab, which is Graphic Arts and Communications, which I'm a senior in now. It's also just being in academic classes where I've had the opportunity to go to the Lebanon Rotary Club and speak for their four-way speech. I won first place last year at the Golden Lamb, which was a great opportunity that I got to do through my English class, actually, which obviously I wouldn't be able to do because that's Lebanon, not Springbrough. So it's something like a pathway that I got to go through. Other opportunities, my best friend here, she's from Franklin. I wouldn't have met her. It's just so many people connected in one place for one thing. And it's just a great opportunity all around. Some other things that are offered here are OSHA training, so occupational training and certification, which we are working on this year. Last year, we got CPR certified, which both things, either students here wouldn't have the resources or the means to connect with, which are both really important, especially in this job industry and job force with electrical trades, construction, every place, basically. I'll speak more about my lab later, but a big part of the senior lab is customer service projects. We have a service window in the Graphic Arts and Communication Lab where live projects, so people from our school, districts around here. We have Franklin High School come to us for posters or T-shirts. We have students come for thank you cards for the teachers, anything along that caliber. I'm currently working on a project for the gazebo park outside of the Lebanon Rotary Club at the Golden Lamb, which I've been working with local businesses in Lebanon to complete. So every part of the community is tied in here at the Career Center. And it's just an incredible opportunity to go here. So I'll tell you more about my lab on the tour, but thank you for listening.
I think our students are triple threat options when they come here because they can come here and be ready for college in two years after they leave here. They can learn a career, go right into a career. That's a second option for them. But they also learn a life skill that they will have within the rest of their life, whether they go into that career or whatever they decide to do. They're learning life skills here that they can use as a hobby or whatever the rest of their life. So comprehensive schools do a great job preparing students, but we give them an extra few options that help them be successful if they didn't here. I also want to introduce, I almost forgot, would have been the worst mistake of my career. If I didn't introduce who put together our dinner tonight, and that is our culinary arts instructor, Kate Cole. Kate, stand up. Kate coordinated the putting together of this restaurant. And Kate is probably sick of me. I bring people in all the time and have dinners in here and lunches in here. And Kate and her students are always so great at doing it. And I've started a tradition that they always have to come out and introduce themselves. Was it good for them to interact with the community, et cetera, too? But, so Kate, thank you. It was absolutely delicious. And we appreciate your time and all the work you do to make us successful, so.
Thank you for doing the video with four of our students. That was really nice.
That's all I have for right now.
All right, so you want to do the tour now?
Gary's going to lead you on a tour.
What I'll do, I'm sorry.
And this is Gary Patton, our high school director.
There may be a couple of questions before we go on the tour. That's okay?
Absolutely.
And also for the tour, Mr. Patton, not only will the board go, but most of the administrators will also be going because there are some administrators there who also have not been here before. So I'm guessing there may be a question or two.
Yes, we're.
Okay, go ahead, Mrs. Babett, surprisingly. Go ahead.
So my question is this. This is an interesting graphic art and communication. So what, did you come here as a junior?
Yes, I did.
Okay, so how did you, what led you to that? Is it, do you call it a major or like?
Yeah, it's, you go into technical careers and just go like straight out of the Career Center. You can also major in Graphic Arts and Communications.
But like between your sophomore year when you left Springbrough, had you taken some classes like that at Springbrough that led you to even know about this? Or how do students know? Because I know they come and visit here their sophomore year. How do they even know that, like what kind of things, other than that one visit? Are there some things that are kind of prepping them?
Yeah, it's absolute, my teacher, you may know him, Peter Berwald, he taught me computer and graphics in my sophomore year. That's where I kind of got the love for it. And I was like, this is something pretty cool. We had like a college visit from the School of Art and Advertising in Kettering. And I was like, well, this is something you can actually go into. And I hadn't actually picked up on that when we came to visit the Career Center. But after that, I was like, all right, this is something I should be interested in. And then I applied.
And you were telling me earlier, when you graduate here, what will you become?
That's what I forgot to say earlier, but I am actually going for the communications side of my lab. I will be majoring in journalism and communications. I want to go, my dream school is New York University, which I've applied to for the fall. I've also applied for Ohio State University, DePaul, some other major names. And I'm currently accepted at, as I received news of last week, Cleveland State University. So I'm going to get to go to college for something I love to do, so.
Who brought your desk with you?
Yes, this is my mother. She supports me 100% going here. And like I said before, we wish my sister would have. And my brother, she, we're supporting him to go here too, so. It's a family thing.
Any other questions? All right, we've got quite the show coming. Mr. Patton, they're all yours.
Yeah, if you've got, I've ran the career tech side here for over 25 years. I've known Dan that long. So if you've got questions, when I take you around, I'll show you a variety of things. We'll take you on about four labs. What we do for people like Zoe and what we do there, but also how much they can train here. Some of these labs might be a little dirty when you go in because we'll show you a construction lab and what they do and how they put their day together here. We do juniors in the morning, usually lab two and a half hours. They go to academics in the afternoon. And then we switch it for our seniors and for legal. But our big thing is hopefully by the time they go to their last semester of their senior year, they're, that's our goal. It's always internships, paid internships, early placement, whatever it pays. And right now, when Rick came and started to say, look, business industry needs them and they're ready, let's go ahead and get them out to work. So I've got, just last week, my mom took 15 kids out in pretty good jobs. We've got label medical, which they're working for, one of them's working for a lawyer. Our welders are going off the floor right now for 15, 16 dollars now. Our electricians, we can't keep, good times right now, though. Good times, you know, so.
Well, before we start to move, Mr. Smith, what's in front of our board members?
Just a little package of appreciation. It is a cord separator for your IT cord. But you might enjoy that, the little bag it comes in. We don't have many visitors here, so we, you know, we guys.
And a bunch of propaganda, right?
Yes. Please look at that, tells you a little bit more about us and talks about our adult ed programming. The good thing about our adult ed programming is not only can adults come here, we can go to business and industry and set up a training right at their business.
Real quick, I have a nephew whose family moved to German Town several years ago. And struggled maybe a little bit academically, but came here to the adult ed student in the power line program. Is that the right name?
Lignment.
Lignment program. And he is very successful in that program now and doing some really, really good things because he found the adult ed program that worked for him.
And also forgot to mention that Dan, we partnered on a presenter last week that was just fantastic. David Raiber visited our students. There was a lot of tears and just did a great job as any of our students. And again, Dan and I worked together on that because Dan brought that to us and he jumped right on that. So another way that we partner. Again, we couldn't be successful without the support of all of our boards and all of our home schools.
Can I add? I brought my son through here for a tour this summer. And I would say I was very impressed with the teachers that we interacted with. You could tell they were very passionate about what they were doing and the work that they, if it was the computer IT stuff, what they were doing there, or if it was the builder or the machine person. I mean, they loved what they did. And they wanted, whatever students they were working with to be successful. So it was neat to see, and I didn't know if it, and I don't know if it's a fit for my sophomore, but it was just neat to see how passionate they were. So it was a great experience, a great tour. Yeah.
Thank you. All right, let's take them. All yours. President, board members, before, I think everyone has left except for the superintendent. Again, for the record, I want to thank Warren County Career Center for their hospitality, for the work tonight from their culinary arts, students and staff, preparing a wonderful meal, to the tour today and seeing five different labs and all the information that they have given us tonight. Thank you, Mr. Smith, and thank you for your leadership, your partnership with Springbrough Schools. With that, we're ready to move on. Mr. President, item 2.2 is our report card presentation. Andrea Cook in a couple of minutes with some outstanding news that obviously you all heard about. One of 28 schools in Ohio is May grade. And now here's where we dive into all the data. Andrea, Chuck, yours.
That was a hard act to follow, that tour. We're going to do our best news. We have some of the best news we've had in a long time.
Yeah.
So this is, this is going to be easy because it was exciting. We found out, last year we gave you an early report card presentation. We had preliminary data and we built a slide deck for you. This year, we asked Mr. Frerich, can we wait a month? Because we think we're going to have more information from the state. So if we could just wait one more month before we do our board report, we think we'll have some good news. And we do. This is the best news we could possibly have. As you can see in all the districts in this, in the state of Ohio, we have 4.6% of us that receive an A. The bulk of the districts are in this B, C range. We're thrilled to be out here. We are only one of eight districts south of Columbus that received an A. Four in Dayton area and four in Cincinnati area. We're the only district that's in excess of 5,000 students to receive an A. And at the end, I have a slide that shows a little bit more about that and a little bit more about those districts that we're right next and next with with our ed. Our district report card is made up of six areas. The first area is achievement. And we'll go in the order in which you see here through each segment of the report card. So achievement is 20%. Achievement means the student passed the test. Progress shows us how far they came in one year. Did they get one year's growth? Did they get less than one year's growth? Or did they get more than one year's growth? Our graduation rate is 15%. Our gap closing is at 15. Improving K-3 readers, another 15%. And lastly, prepared for success, which was new roughly a year or two ago. We spoke to you about that. So we're seeing that one again on our report card. As I said, we start out with achievement. Achievement is merely, did the student pass the test or not? The test is a five-point test. So they either scored 5, 4, 3, 2, or 1 points. If they scored a 3, 4, or a 5 on the test, they passed it. If they scored a 1 or a 2, they did not pass. We're looking for 80% of our students in each test to make the indicator. So the state indicators, you can see here, all of these screen checks indicate that we made 80% or more of our population pass the test. So this is our third through fifth grade. And you can see they made all of their indicators. And moving along, sixth through eighth grade, you can see we lost one indicator out of sixth through eighth, and that's in English Language Arts in eighth grade. We're working with Mr. Franks and the eighth grade English Language Arts teachers going through the tests, going through the different standards to find out where did we lose points? What could we teach better to our students? What part of the standard are we not making with our students? And making some adjustments along with our social studies teachers and science teachers because as we know, English Language Arts and reading and writing go across the board in all subject areas. While it's an English Language Arts test, our science teachers contribute, our social studies teachers contribute, all teachers contribute to that area. So our last professional development day, I spent a lot of time with our sixth through eighth grade social studies teachers going over reading standards to see what reading standards do they hit within social studies and how can they assist with this indicator? They were happy to do that. Our high school indicators, as you can see here, we made all but two indicators. The high school has a new indicator that we've not seen in the past. That indicator is an EOC improvement indicator. And I'll tell you a little bit about that one. In the high school, our students have to have 18 points to graduate over the course of seven tests. Two points are, four points are required in math. So we have a geometry test and an algebra test. So a student has to have a culmination of four points in those two tests. They can get three points in geometry, two points in algebra. They have to have an average of four over those. English Language Arts, one. English Language Arts, two, has to be an average of four overall. It doesn't matter how they get their average, but they have to have four points overall in math. So they've got a 3 and a 1 to get their four. They could have a 2 and a 2 to get their four, a 1 and a 3. But that's how those work in our students. Have to have the culmination of 18 points over seven tests with those four points in ELA and four points in math in order to graduate. Now, this is a good place to talk a little bit about some other areas that we're going to get to whereby our students at the Career Center have other pathways. They have some alternate pathways that they can get to graduate outside of the EOC. And we'll talk more about that later. I do want to point out these two red Xs. Those are indicators that we did not make. A couple of years ago, we decided to take a look at this integrated math test. That's what you see here as mathematics 1. We had around 12 students that took the mathematics 1 test. All of those students were special needs students. We thought at one point that we should try the integrated math 1, integrated math 2 route for those students as opposed to the algebra-geometry route. We have since found that teaching algebra to all students is a better route than attempting to do algebra for most of our students, doing some integrated math for some. So we are no longer going to be tested in this area by our choice. Districts have the choice of picking up these two tests or not, or relying on the algebra and the geometry test. So that's the route that we're going to be choosing in the future. So this indicator will fall off of our report card. You won't see next year an indicator for math 2 or math 1 on there. The reason math 2 does not have an indicator check or X is because we did not test that last year. So next year, when you look at this particular slide, you will see NC here, NC here. So there will not be tested. This one I want to go over because it's new for you, is 35%. Because the students have to have 18 to graduate, some students have to retake tests. So if they don't get that culmination of four points in English Language Arts, they have to retest. They can retest, like let's say they got a 1 in English Language Arts 1, they got a 2 in English Language Arts 2. They can choose which one they want to retake. Both of those scores are failures, the 1 and the 2. Whichever one they felt more comfortable with, they can retest them to get the four points necessary for graduation in English Language Arts. What used to happen is this percentage here, 89.1%, would include those students who retook that test. And if they retook that test and they failed it a second time, it would lower this percentage of school district. So the state came up with, along with ESA through the feds, they came up with a new means of showing how our students who are not successful in these tests do. And they call that the EOC improvement indicator. So when a student retakes a test, that shows up here as opposed to here. So all of these indicators that you see, this 89.1, 91, et cetera, those are percentages for first round testing of students. The second round testing, if they go for a retake, shows up in this indicator. You can see we got a check mark here. And I told you earlier, we had to have an 80 to pass an indicator. This indicator is different. We have to have a 25% passage rate on retakes in order to pass this indicator. We have the 35%. We would like to see that go up. What we look at is what are we doing to intervene with our students from the first time they took it and got a 1 or 2 on the test and the second time they took it? In some cases, the students choose to not do anything for prevention. They say, you know what, it was a bad day. I can do it better. I know the material. I'm going to go in and I'm going to test again. In other cases, they go and they take what's called an Apex tutorial. It's an online program that tests them over all of the standards on the particular test that they want to retake. So all the standards in English Language Arts 2, for instance, they go through the tutorial. They do a pre-test that says, you know what, you're missing X number of standards and we're going to drill you on those standards. We're going to give you an opportunity to learn those standards better because you know all the other ones. You don't have to learn everything over again. They retake the test, they show up here. They no longer show up here a second time. So we were very aware, I work with Mr. Martin and I say, if students aren't ready to retest, please do not retest them because it messes with our indicator numbers. It no longer does. It hits one indicator only. So we're really pleased that the state came up with this alternate means for testing for second rounds.
So with the taking out math 1, did you say their two math scores would be in geometry and algebra 1?
Yes.
So I would guess that those would lower a little bit potentially because those are our more at-risk students?
They are.
So, but our algebra score is already super high, so.
We have a little wiggle room.
We've got a little wiggle room there. And geometry, you're already looking at seeing what the, I mean, that was a little bit lower there. So I'm just trying to understand what we're looking at there. So then with the EOC improvement indicator, does that mean that 35, like overall, they pass at a 35% passage rate? Or is that, I know it only needed to be 25 for it normally to be 80%. Like what does that 25% indicate?
If 100 students took the test, 25 of them passed.
Okay, okay.
So in this case, 35 of 100 would have passed the test that took it on the retake.
Gotcha. It wasn't the 25% that they got, it was 25.
Right. You got it. So now what we have to do, since we have this indicator and we can separate it, we need to look at those students individually and say, need to look at those students individually and say, Mrs. Babri took algebra. We need to look and say, hey, Mrs. Babri, what'd you do before you retook your algebra test? Did you do any preparation? What type of preparation? Did you go to tutoring? Did you go to summer school? Did you do Apex tutorials? Did you just study on your own? Did you get a tutor? So, we can talk to those students who took this indicator over, so they did their retest, and say, what did you do? So, we can find out our best way to interview these students based on the success of our students. So, we like that indicator.
Yeah, helpful. Okay, great. I just didn't quite understand that. Thank you.
Sure.
Our last indicator is the gifted indicator for the district. And it's, it's a more complicated indicator, somewhat like the EOC indicator. There's actually three parts to it that we have to pass to meet this indicator. The first part is value added. They pull out all the gifted students' scores and calculate their value added or progress. And to meet that part of the indicator, you have to get a C in value added. We were very pleased with our result. This year, we got an A in gifted students' value added, and that's up from four years ago where we got an F. So, we're really, really proud of how well our teachers have done in increasing our students' progress at that upper end of the spectrum. So, we met that portion of the gifted indicator. The second portion is the gifted input points, and that's where the state gives us points for the number of students we identify, including in at-risk subgroups like lower socioeconomic or other at-risk groups. And it also gives us points for how many of our students we are serving within the district. Our cutoff for that was eighty points, and we received eighty-eight points. That's one of the most difficult areas that most school districts around the state are struggling with, but we are not. Only about twelve percent of the districts in the state actually hit that portion of the indicator. So, it's, it's one of the more difficult ones to hit. This last part is the performance index of gifted students, and this is where they pull out the gifted students' test scores and how they scored at a one, two, three, four, or five by the limited basic proficient accelerated and advanced. And we actually give points for that. You'll also see at the top, advanced plus. Those were our gifted students who have actually been subject or grade accelerated. And if they were and scored advanced in their accelerated class, they actually count as advanced plus. So, any student who's accelerated and makes a certain score on the test is automatically advanced one level up. So, that's why they created the advanced plus category. So, you can see that that's running very well for us right now. We scored a one sixteen point two one four, which was just point eight short of what the requirement was of a one seventeen. So, for the performance index, even though we were very close, we didn't miss that portion of the indicator. So, we missed overall the gifted indicator as one of our indicators. So, that brings us to questions.
One second. Sorry. Did you get back? Absolutely. I mean, it strikes me that, I guess if I'm doing my math right, ninety-plus percent of our students are accelerated or above. What's, do we ever see a typical distribution to compare ourselves?
Well, the state has told us what distribution they want us to be at. And in their mind, for our gifted students, ten percent at proficient. You can see we were at six point two. Ten percent at accelerated. You can see we were a little high at twenty-two point nine. And the entire rest, eighty percent, should be in advanced and advanced plus. So, when we look at this and we're studying with our teachers what we need to do, what we look at, we just have to get a couple more students from the four range into the five range. So, how do we provide a little bit more rigor, a little more challenge to them to get them over that last little bump? So, that, that's basically what the state told us that we needed to achieve. So, that brings us to the total of all the indicators, all the grade level tests, all the EOC improvement and the gifted indicator. We achieved twenty-one out of twenty-four indicators according to eighty-four percent of grade of B. Remember, we did not meet English Language Arts, geometry, mathematics one, and the gifted indicator. Those are the three that we missed. It's also interesting to point out that this number of indicators has been changing a lot over the last three years. Two years ago, there was a total of twenty-nine indicators. Last year, there was a total of twenty-five indicators. So, this is changing as the state is settling on what things they want to keep using as an indicator. So, right now, we're at twenty-one out of twenty-four. The second...
One more question. Sorry. So, so next year, just assuming nothing else changes, we'd be twenty-one out of twenty-three?
Yes.
With math one?
You have math one, go guys. Correct.
Thanks.
The second part of achievement on the test is overall performance index. You already saw a chart of gifted performance index. Now, the state looks at the entire district, every student who took a test, and they score us on performance index overall. And you can see the same line out that you saw before on the gifted indicator, but remember, all students are included now. We had a scale score of one oh one point four out of one twenty. Hey, if you can go to the next one. You can see this in the pie chart and on the bar graphs. Way back in two thousand fourteen, where we were very high at one oh six point nine, you'll remember, those are the old days of the Ohio Achievement Test. That was the last year of the Ohio Achievement Test. Two thousand fifteen was the first PARC test, and then the state switched again, and we went to the AIR test in two thousand sixteen. So, what we're trying to see is this build back up to this level as we learn more and more about the test and what our students need to learn and achieve for. So, we're very happy with the fact that we're maintaining this one oh one right now, just a point three lower, but in this scale score of one twenty, it's basically the same score. You'll notice that our advanced plus is growing up here at the top, which will continue to happen. And it's hard to tell, but we just had a little increase down here on the bottom, which accounts for the point three change. But we're looking for this to keep building as we become more comfortable. So, then they put both of those together, eighty-four percent for, eighty-four point five percent for performance index for a score of B, combined with eighty-four percent for the indicator's match, and our overall achievement score is a B.
Okay, that was the first twenty percent of the district report card. The next twenty percent is progress. And progress is indicative of when a student enters with us in August, how much growth they make till May when they walk out. So, we're looking for one year's growth. So, ideally, when a student walks in in August and they leave in May, they're going to grow a year. When they grow a year, you see yellow. So, a good example of yellow is in sixth grade Language Arts. Those students walked in in August, they walked out in May, they got a year's growth in English Language Arts. Those same students went to a math class. You see green on math. The green is indicative of they gained more than one year's worth of instruction, more than one year's worth of learning in math. So, yellow is good because it's one year. Green is better because they're getting more than expected growth. When we see red, we have concerns. Red means that we didn't quite make that year's growth that we would have hoped to make. When we see orange here in fourth grade mathematics, they are hitting right in between that one year's growth, maybe one step behind that one year's growth. They're not in the red yet, but they're getting flipped. So, what we want is green, ideally. Yellow is fine. So, as you can see, overall, we received an A in progress for all. We received an A for gifted students, as Mr. Williams had said just a couple minutes ago. Our lowest twenty percent is the, is not just our lowest twenty percent, it is the lowest twenty percent in the state of Ohio. So, if the state of Ohio took all the children in school and they sliced them into quintiles, so the top twenty percent, the second, the third, the fourth, and the fifth twenty percent, those are the lowest twenty percent in achievement. Those are Ohio's lowest twenty percent. They are not Springboro's lowest twenty percent. And in some of our buildings, we're hard-pressed to have enough kids in the lowest twenty percent to be able to measure that. So, that's, that's the one takeaway I want you to take from this slide. This is not Springboro's lowest twenty percent, but rather Ohio's lowest twenty percent. Our students with disabilities measure at a C in progress. And if you look at this map, this tells you the grade levels from four through eight. What you might say is, well, we have that third grade test. What's going on with that third grade test? Why are they not on the progress chart? The state takes the information from the third grade test. When the children take their fourth grade test, that's their baseline to see, did they gain from third to fourth? Did they gain from fourth to fifth, and so on and so forth? We have high school testing down here. Progress is measured in English Language Arts and mathematics at the high school level. That's why when you saw all of those tests before with social studies and science included, you don't see it here because they're not measuring the progress beyond English Language Arts and mathematics.
It's also important to note for our progress, excuse me. Yeah, thanks. We're, we're now at three years added up into that progress. So, that is not just progress from one year. As we've had three years of the AIR test, progress is now over a three-year. So, next year, when you see this, the last year will drop off and the new year will come on. So, that can change from that level.
So, depending on what we did three years ago, there's a lot to do for what we'll be next year.
Okay, again, what was the red?
Red is less than one year's growth.
So, were they just three colors? Green, yellow, red? Oh, what was the one?
Between yellow and...
It's going the wrong direction.
Yellow and red.
Okay, gap closing is our next area, and this is worth fifteen percent on our report card. And gap closing is a measure for our most vulnerable students. The state looks at different, what we call, subgroups. So, we're looking at different groups of students that may be considered vulnerable. So, for instance, students with disabilities you see here in light blue. They want to make sure that we're making growth with students with disabilities. This is a new chart this year. They didn't have this last year. Last year's chart showed, we expect seventy-two, so it would be right in here, all groups to hit the seventy-two mark in the state level. This year, you see these red dots are all over the place. So, what the state has done is they looked at those vulnerable groups of students, and they've decided that different groups, they want to see different progress within those groups. So, you can see at the very top, our Asian or Pacific Islander group, they have scored out of one hundred and twenty, they've gone to one oh six point seven. The state expected that group to get right here in that ninety-plus range. We far exceeded that with the one oh six point seven. And if you'll take a note, if the next one down in the rainbow, here at one oh two point one, is our multiracial students. So, they're scoring below our Asian students, but they're scoring above our white, non-Hispanic students. So, as you go down here, you've got our multiracial, then our white, then oddly, this, this always perplexed me because if we're looking at subgroups, we have an all-student subgroup. So, this is everybody. So, if you take everybody in the pack, and you average them out there to one oh one point two, then until you see our Hispanic students in pink, our black, non-Hispanic, then we move into our economically disadvantaged, then an eighty-six point seven. Those are our youth who qualify for free and reduced lunch, and then our students with disabilities here. You can see on this band for English Language Arts, we exceeded the red dots, the state's expectations on all of those subgroups. Now, what I'd like to mention is you have to have twenty-five youngsters in this, in a group to, to claim as a subgroup. So, we have to have twenty-five students or more that are economically disadvantaged for this yellow band to show up. If we didn't have twenty-five economically disadvantaged students, that band wouldn't be on this chart.
Do they get pulled out of the other groups when they do that, or do they show up multiple times?
They, that's a great question. They'll, they will show up multiple times. So, if we have, if we have a multiracial student who happens to be on an IEP, and he or she happens to be economically disadvantaged, we'll see them here, here, and then we'll see them in the all-student subgroup, and then we'll see them in the race subgroup. So, that's, I'm glad you asked that because one student can hit several bars depending on what their background is and what they qualify for. So, that's English Language Arts. As you can see in mathematics, a similar pattern with our Asian students, then our multiracial, then our white, then our all-students, and on down. Again, I want to point out the red dots. These are the state's expectations for us, and the colored bars are where we achieve, or where we show our gap closing achievements, which we are in excess of all of the red dots. Again, in mathematics. And then our very interesting chart, this is graduation ring. You can see the rainbow just tronk. That means that we solely have by subgroup in the graduation class, all students clearly got, that's not happening, we have one in twenty-five, white, non-Hispanic, and students with disabilities. So, we lost that Asian subgroup, we lost our black subgroup, we lost our multiracial subgroup. We've lost several subgroups because this is just one class, whereas that math and that English Language Arts is several different classes all put together. So, that's where that twenty-five comes in to make sense of this small graph.
I'm surprised the economic disadvantage disappeared.
I think what happens with that, Mr. Brooks, is as students get older and they're in high school, I think we end up with some youth who would qualify for free and reduced lunch not filling out forms because they, they don't want that.
Yeah.
That stigma.
How did the state determine what the standard would be for the expectation for where the red dots would fall?
The state looked at current, the current achievement across the state. So, they recognized that certain subgroups are not achieving, and when they chose to put in the red dot or the, the number as opposed to just the seventy-two across the board, which is what we saw last year, they took into consideration that some groups are not moving at the same rate as other groups. So, they want to make it achievable for a district to be able to look out to see, okay, where, where should we be? Where can we be? So, you don't have this, okay, we're going to move out of seventy-two and put it all at eighty and expect people to try to get to eighty. Because if you look at some district's data, you, you might have a subgroup that's way back in here. So, they're, they're looking to make it achievable based on past data. And we're pleased they did that because that whole seventy-two thing, as you could see, is ridiculous for certain subgroups. Certain subgroups are so far beyond that the expectations for them should be a little bit higher than others until we can get this evened out across the state.
Andrea, can you go in detail about the graduation rate for the bottom?
Yeah, actually, I should.
Thank you.
It's seventy-three point seven. This is misleading. And I say this is misleading because our students with disabilities coming in at a seventy-three point seven out of a one twenty, the reason that that's misleading is many of these youth are still with us. So, they qualified, they had their credits, they're ready to graduate, but we're lucky in Warren County that we have wonderful programs to get them ready for life. We have wonderful programs to get them ready for jobs, to prepare them to go out into the world, to prepare them to live on their own or in a group home, and they have to learn those skills. And as long as they stay a student in the Springboro school system, we fund that, that education for them. Now, I don't like that it looks like this, but what I do like is that we're providing for those students. They deserve to be provided for. We're lucky to be able to have programs to be able to assist those youth, and they will be better prepared to be productive citizens. We would like to see this further over, but if it means that we're servicing students with an education that's going to serve them for the rest of their life, we're okay here. All right, so our gap closing, because we hit all of those bars beyond the red dots, beyond the state's expectations, we came in with one hundred percent. You can't do any better than a hundred percent. So, we're really happy that when we look at our subgroups, when we look at our economically disadvantaged, when we look at our students that have disabilities, when we look at our different racial groups, socioeconomic groups, we are servicing those students, and we will continue to do so.
Next up is improving our at-risk K through three readers. And you may have noticed that on our report card, we had an NR or no rating. And the reason for that is what you see up here at the top. We have not been rated because less than five percent of our kindergarten students were listed as not on track. So, once you reach that level, they don't rate the indicator as a total. Now, different buildings may have a rating, but the district will not. Even though we didn't get an official rating, we still very carefully look at all that data for our at-risk readers. So, we put up a couple of things here for us just to keep in mind. How many third graders met the third grade reading guarantee requirements for promotion to fourth grade from Springboro? That was ninety-nine point five percent of our students. So, a very high percentage. We're very proud of that. And then, secondly, how many third graders scored proficient on the state English Language Arts test was at eighty-two percent? When you might say, how come only eighty-two percent passed the state test, but we passed ninety-nine point five percent onto fourth grade? That's because the state provides us multiple measures to test those students, such as the Terra Nova and the Iowa, that the student can demonstrate their knowledge outside of the state test. So, eighty-two percent, and if you think back to those indicators way back at the beginning, that bar is, is set at eighty percent for all of those state tests. We exceeded that at eighty-two. And then with the students who didn't hit that, we managed to get them by with intervention, providing the extra reading help, and then retesting them to show that they can go on to fourth grade. We're very proud of those numbers.
Is the less than five percent, is that taken off of the KRA? Or what is the assessment?
No, that's taken off our whole grade assessments, which in kindergarten is the age level.
All right, opposite end of the age scale here, we're going up to graduation. And our graduation rate, you see here is a ninety-six point three percent. That does factor in our students with disabilities who did meet all of the graduation requirements that are staying with us for further training. And you can see here, what we have on this chart is similar districts. And you might say, well, what's a similar district? Similar districts are identified by the state of Ohio periodically, whereby they take into consideration socioeconomic, they take into consideration the makeup of students, they take into consideration the, the income values of, of the individuals who live in the communities. So, they're trying to find districts that look like Springboro. Tara, do you have anything you want to say about them financially or you're good?
They always compare financially the same, the same set of subgroups in terms of how many students. They also look at people who are reasonably the same. They also look at people who are reasonably the same size as us, and like you said, the median household income and socioeconomic of the actual community itself.
So with that being said, we have three areas here. Certainly, we don't want to compare ourselves with the state, that's a little lower bar. We work with Kyle and his team every year, and we say we want one-hundred percent of our kids to graduate, and who's on track, who's not on track. They track those throughout the four years of high school. Any students who need credits, they work closely with those students to get those credits because we would desire a graduation rate at one-hundred percent. When a student spends thirteen years of their life in an institution such as Springbrough Schools, we want them to walk out with a diploma. They've worked very hard for a very long time. So as you can see here, this is the four-year rate for our class of two thousand seventeen. You'll say, well, why isn't it two thousand eighteen data? All graduation data, Prepared for Success data, which you'll see next, is backdated here. So everything you saw up until now is two thousand eighteen data. This is two thousand seventeen data. So as we're looking here, we're trying to compare ourselves in blue with the black bar. We want to make sure that we're in line with the black bar, not the green bar. The green bar is way too low for, for our standards here in our community.
This is where we get dinged again potentially with the students with disabilities that may stay on past four years.
Yes, so you see that again. So we're not under one ninety-six. You see a four-year graduation rate here. Some of those students stay in a program for one year. That's why they show a five-year graduation rate. Some of those students stay in a program until they're twenty-two years old. So depending on what their needs are and what we're able to provide them will depend on whether they fall in a four-year rate, a five-year rate, or we won't see them on a chart because we're keeping them until they're twenty-two.
Do we have any that graduate but still come back? Like they walk with the class that they've gone through thirteen years with, and then they still come back to continue until they're twenty-two?
They walk with the class, but we do not issue them a diploma. So they spent thirteen years from kindergarten through grade twelve with their peers. We want to see them as part of that peer cohort. So when they walk across the stage and they shake your hand, they receive their diploma cover, but we do not issue their diploma.
Where would they be, would they, would we say that they graduated? So we would not.
If they don't receive the diploma, they're, they're only through a ceremony with their peers.
Okay, so to me, it's good that we're not getting to one-hundred percent because that means we're meeting the kids' needs where they're at.
Exactly.
I think if we get one-hundred percent, that means that we potentially are not doing what's best for those kids that are eighteen to twenty-two.
That's exactly what it means. Yeah, and I would be leery of anybody's district report card that's at one-hundred percent. I would say to them, what are you doing for students with disabilities?
I agree, so I'm glad to see that it's not one-hundred percent.
Something to kind of keep in mind going before graduation, the state has, is now saying also that, and Emily can kind of chime in if you want to, but with the state tests, for students that have special needs, you can exempt them from that graduation requirement. What that allows them to do is allows them to earn a diploma. In years past, if you, if you exempted them, exempted them after they tried as many times as they need to, you exempted that student, and they got the diploma, they count as a graduate. The state is now saying, you can exempt them, but they will count as a non-graduate for you. So that's something that we even talk to parents about. Of course, that's a, it's tough to swallow. Because, you know, as a parent, if you have a special needs child, to say that they're not a graduate. So my conversation has been, so if we're giving them a diploma, then we're counted as a graduate. State says, no, they're not a graduate. Well, then if they're not a graduate, then why are we giving them a diploma? Well, you can give them a diploma. Well, then they're a graduate. So it kind of goes back and forth. And I've had that conversation with a few people with the state. But that's, that's kind of where they're headed with this, so.
I will tell them that as far as legislation is. And lastly, our last fifteen percent here you see is called Prepared for Success. We presented this to you last year as a new item. Prepared for Success is looking at our graduates. Our students who graduate, are they ready to go into the world? And that's based on a couple of different items. As you can see here, we're looking at remediation free scores on ACT and SAT, honors diploma, industry-recognized credentials. So I'll just go down this chart and speak a couple of words on each. As you can see, first off, in the title, this is our two thousand sixteen and seventeen graduating classes. So when you look at this cohort of eight-hundred-and-thirty-six, that's the culmination of two different graduating classes together. You can see here with eighty-six-point-seven percent participation in ACT. Last year, we started this ACT for all across the state of Ohio. That's where the state allows a student to take the ACT for free as a junior. We do that during a school day. All the juniors come in, they take their ACT test. We have close to one-hundred percent participation on that. So naturally, you'll see this number go up as the years go on because we have more students who are taking it. They're not taking it so much by choice, and the parent writing a check now. We're providing that opportunity for them. ACT remediation free. When I brought up that students needed to have eighteen points on end-of-course exams to graduate, there is somewhat of a loophole when it comes to ACT. The ACT remediation free numbers set by the state of Ohio come out every year in February of the student's junior year. So this year, if I'm a junior in February, I'm going to see what the state considers remediation free numbers on my ACT. And if I score above the remediation free numbers on the ACT, I no longer need to meet all those end-of-course requirements. We have a young lady this year that was short one point. We just worked on her pace this week. She got her ACT scores back. She does not have to fall into that end-of-course retest group, that cohort. But she's rather going to waive her end-of-course points, and she'll be graduated because she is ACT remediation free. So that's a whole different pathway to graduation. SAT participation, you might say, why is there only eight-point-six percent of our students taking a SAT? Typically, when our students come in as freshmen, and we talk to them, and we say, where are you going to school? Oh, I'm going to UCLA, I'm going to NYU. They're all going to the coast. They're all going big time, they're all going far away from Ohio, seeking it either direction. We talk to them as seniors, they become a little bit more realistic. They're staying in the Midwest summer, they're going to be at IU, they're going to be at LSU, they're going to be at Miami, they're going to be at UK. And those schools are ACT-preferred schools over SAT. So that's why we have this huge discrepancy here. And our honors diploma, thirty-six-point-two, I don't think I brought up to you yet the different honors diplomas in the state of Ohio. Ohio has expanded the honors diploma for many years. We had criteria through the state for honors diploma that was all the same for many years. Now we have a STEM honors diploma, we have an arts honors diploma. We have several different routes students can go on an honors diploma based on what they're good at. So our expectation is we will capture more students in this area than the thirty-six-point-two percent that you see for these graduating classes. When we walked through one of the labs, we were told by Mr. Patton that these students are working on industry-recognized credentials. That was Zoe's lab. So Zoe said that she's got credentials in several different areas, and that's where this industry-recognized credential comes in. He mentioned a twelve-point credential. So we're looking at a twelve-point credential and passage of the work keys is another way for students to graduate. The work keys test is available online. I would encourage you, if you have some time, to go in and attempt to take the work keys test. It is much more difficult than our end-of-course test. So when we look at different pathways for students who might be short on an end-of-course test, that work keys test is not an easy way out. But the industry-recognized credential along with the work keys points goes into another path of graduation. AP participation, we're at thirty-six-point-four percent, are very proud of that. We have increased the amount of AP courses at our high school significantly within the last five, six years. So this will climb as more students are participating in AP courses and this exam score of three points or better. If a student is taking an AP course, they have an opportunity to take a test in the spring. And that three or better allows them to waive the freshman class at their college in many cases. So if I'm going to go to Miami University and I've taken AP Psychology and I scored a three, or four, or five on that exam, they're going to give me the college credits for that course. Now, when you're looking at, for instance, like a Harvard or a Yale, they're going to say, we don't care about AP credits. We want all the money for all four years. We're not granting anything out there for you that's, that's a given. So that's why that falls in here. Mr. Martin, every July, around the second to third week of July sends me these AP scores of three or better on the chart. He keeps those. Every year, we're seeing those go higher and higher and higher. So we expect that to naturally go up again. Dual enrollment credit, I don't think I need to spend a whole lot of time on that. We're all aware of where we are with College Parent Plus. We're nearing thirty-nine percent in these two years. Knock off the sixteen, go into the seventeen, eighteen, you're going to see that rise. International Baccalaureate, we do not offer at Springbrough. We believe this point-one percent is a child that moved in and chose to, to not take the test or did not get a four or better. So these, we don't expect to see in the future. Altogether, that brings us to, go back one.
Oh, sorry.
Altogether, that brings us to a B. Those ones that I said that we expect to see these bars moving up or we're hoping within the next two years to climb to an A. Again, twenty, twenty-fifteen, fifteen, fifteen, fifteen. What questions do you have over the district report card? Okay, we got one last slide for you that, that we built. I couldn't do this whole presentation without bringing this up. You can see over here, these are the, the schools south of Columbus that we're, that we're brothers and sisters with, with A's. As you can see, Wyoming City, Merrimott City, Madera City, Indian Hill, those are the four in the Cincinnati region. They are all under twenty-five hundred students. Our partners in the Dayton area, Bel- Bel Brook, Sugar Creek, Oakwood, and Wayne Local, Wayne Local, Oakwood, one-thousand twenty-four ninety-nine. So the theme that you see here is we're the only school south of Columbus in excess of five thousand students this coordinate. We are ecstatic about that, we're very proud of that. There isn't another school south of Columbus that's doing as well as Springbrough Community Schools of our size. Financially, this chart starts at seventy-five hundred. And you can see the spending of the other A's south of Columbus. If you could just imagine what we could do as a district if we only had the money that went to help us. Yes, and Indian Hill's seventy dollars per view.
Thank you. So, Mr. President, members of the board, we are only at two-point-two tonight. We're going to keep rolling. So I believe we don't have any of the report. You can ask them.
Anybody from Springbrough?
No. Classified? I think we're ready to move into more discussion. And with that, if you want to, does anyone in the rest of the board? All right, Mr. President, we're at three-point-two. The discussion for side effects addendum with John Fennell.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Mr. President, members of the board. For work today, I just want to go over this real quick because we'll be voting on the, the agreement to, for side effects to do the scoreboard at the varsity football field. All these other pieces are all parts of that. So that's why we were, we're, it's all included here. When the, we've had an agreement with side effects since two thousand fourteen. It was supposed to go for three years, and then if we wanted to renew it, we were just supposed to renew it. And so what we did is we had some email and phone conversations and face-to-face conversations about renewing the contract. And so at that point in time, back in the end of two thousand seventeen, we just, we didn't take the, we didn't need any board action to approve it because we had verbal agreements with them that we would go ahead and continue it, and they were okay with just continuing it. So we, we've been going for over a year now with that in process. And then what happened is they, they really wanted to memorialize that. So we were going to, in the spring, we started discussions about rewriting or, or putting it down in paper. In that same timeframe, we decided that we wanted to try to, with the, the change, the huge increase, our sponsorship we got from Watkins, and the money we were getting to do the field and the turf is replace the scoreboard, which was dated and everything else. So the piece about that is we also didn't want to spend any dollars from general fund on that piece either. So side effects was heavy into trying to create sponsorships or naming rights or other things that we were going to be able to do to pay for the scoreboard without having to use general fund monies. And so what they did is we came up with some agreements. One with Lunt Orthodontics, one with Domino's. And the Domino's one is a little bit tricky because Domino's has a lot of, of individual sponsorship throughout the district. So it took, I would say, at least ten meetings in about three or four months to get Domino's to the point where we could have signed the agreement. And so with the Lunt agreement, with the Domino's agreement, and then the other sponsorship deals that they, that side effects was able to create, we were able to get a deal with Daktronic so that we could pay this off in, in five years. So in the, those pieces that are attached to the agenda, you'll see the, the Daktronic's agreement, the Domino's agreement, the Lunt agreement, and then the, the main sponsorship agreement. That's mainly there just to show you that we're going to need to sign it, but there's really no board action on that piece. What you're actually going to be approving tonight is the equipment addendum for the football scoreboard. That's the piece that's in the contract that every time we have another major piece that wasn't part of that original agreement, it would come back to you. Same thing that happened when we did the, the scoreboard for baseball and softball. Those, that, that agree, that one piece came back. But I included all these other things so that you could see, when you look through it, all the things, the little pieces and bits and pieces that came to that. And because it was such a complicated agreement, and we had so many discussions over time, we actually created the Varsity Scoreboard Naming Rights Agreement Details Sheet that Austin and Bob Westerfield will sign to say, yes, this is, this is what we really meant by having all these meetings over the last year. And Austin and Bob have done a great job, and they've worked their tails off to be able to get all this stuff done. So that's really what this whole piece is. The main thing you're voting on is that equipment addendum, which then authorizes that, that piece. And then the rest of that stuff was all just pieces of that. So if you have any questions, I'm here to answer anything you have with that.
With Domino's piece, are there any restrictions, like with Pepsi, where you can only use Pepsi with Domino's?
Yes, well, that's, that, it's the same thing. And it's just like with Lunt, we're not, we won't be able to have another orthodontics on there. Now, Sprols was on there, but I think they're actually going off anyway because I think their agreement was up this time. So it's, with Domino's, we've got a lot of agreements in there, and there's some other side, not side pieces, but some other, some detailed instructions that we have that are on the side for both Lunt and for Domino's about what they're, what they can pass out, what they can do, what we're going to do for them, just like we have for Wat- Watkins. Because Watkins has the same thing in their agreement in terms of we're putting certain things on the website, we're making certain announcements during the games, we're doing certain things with those.
Like if a PTO was going to give somebody a pizza party?
Right.
They need to do it through Domino's?
We encourage that. We cannot, we cannot force the PTOs. Because the PTOs are separate, but.
If a teacher was going to.
If, if, well, a teacher, we can highly encourage to use Domino's. As well as all of our, our booster clubs and things like that, they have to do.
So we kind of sort of should go through Domino's?
So we need to go through Domino's from here on out, just like with Coke. You know, that was, you know, because you know Coke, you know, they donate all that water, but then, and the, the Gatorade, but we couldn't use it because it was Coke, not Pepsi. So we had that, but we, we, we're going to work around that and still be able to get done what we need to do. But that's part of, once this is signed, then we're going to, we got to get that education out to the members of the community. Also, there'll be information coming home. Part of the agreement with Domino's is, is that they have flyers that are going to the teachers, not to the kids to take home, but to the teachers saying, if you have a party, this is what we're going to be able to do for you. So to encourage them to use Domino's even more. So those are the things.
We can also brainstorm other groups. We should make sure we get this in.
Correct. It must, it's pretty much, yeah. And we've been using Domino's almost solely for the, the boosters clubs for several years. Because they've, they've had the, I mean, they've been, that's all they, they donated a lot of money to us over the years. But this is a big chunk of money that's, that's, that we're getting now that we really need to encourage that with everything.
I just know there's other organizations that just also use other people.
Correct.
So I just want to make sure that we're communicating and acting that. wanna make sure that we're communicating and acting that, to make sure that Domino's is getting the, since they're donating so much.
Correct.
Well, and every building principal understands that as well, and most groups that are working with us come under the direction of buildings.
Correct.
So the principals are communicating.
Yeah. Any other questions? Thank you.
It's you.
This is all small, does anybody want, if you have a copy?
It's also on your computer.
Yeah, it's on your computer, but if you don't have a computer, does anybody want for the kind of follow-through?
I do.
No.
Thank you.
No, I'm good.
All right, well, before I get started, there is some extra information that'll be in the packet, so I don't have to go through this kind of standard thing that I put in each forecast to kind of give you a little bit of how these, what's in the numbers in each section. I'm gonna go through just the major changes. I'll scroll through here, not that you can see it, but the first page that you'll see after the cover is the May forecast, doesn't like the peach color. So if I have to, I'm gonna have to do the May forecast, it's there for reference. The major changes for revenue from the May forecast in October, there isn't a lot of major changes actually. We are still expecting the 13.6% increase through the financial update. It's notable to say that if that percentage is finalized at higher than 13.6%, then we'll realize additional revenue that's not currently in the forecast, but those are the latest numbers that we have from the county auditor, and so that's what we project. We will hit the floor with that 13.6, we will hit the floor in January of 2019. So when our taxidermist sees their tax bills, they will receive, if they have an increase, they will see those increases on their January tax bills. We are modeling currently in the forecast about a 99% collection rate, that's the score that Springer collects at. The county auditor only certifies at 97% that we'll receive, but we actually received about 100% for this collection. So that did add about $28,000 in revenue for real estate section for the first half. Now, that doesn't mean that the second half collection might have a little bit more delinquencies and that $28,000 might not fall through all those that end of the year, but as of right now, we did receive $28,000 in additional revenue by collecting at that 100% level instead of the 99%. Public utilities, similar, $28,000 in additional revenue is realized for the first collection for the first half of the year for public utilities. The state funding revenue has not changed in the forecast since May. We are gonna get a 3% increase in our state funding this year for the second year of the biennium update. Now, there will be a new governor and there will be a new budget. What we're going off of right now is the assumption that they'll kind of carry on with what they've been doing the last several years, which is, you know, as we go off right now, because we're going off, we have unfunded formula currently, we're going towards including funded. So once that happens, we will go onto what's called a guarantee, which guarantees us to at least a certain amount. Right now, we're using FY '19 for FY '20 and beyond in the forecast, that we will get at least what we received in FY '19. Now, if the new governor comes in and they say, you're getting too much, those assumptions may change in the future, we won't know that until closer to the end of June because it starts, we don't really start receiving the new funding until around October. So even though the budget bill will be signed and in place for July 1, we won't start receiving the new year's revenue until around October. So we'll know sometime around June what the finalized stuff will look like for the second person to buy in and that's coming starting in July. But currently, right now, we're using FY '19's amounts as what will be in the forecast for '20 and beyond.
So even May 2019 forecast, we're not gonna, the new governor's, whatever he does with the funding isn't, we're not going to know even for that May forecast.
Now, usually, and I did, I've done this the last several years, is I will do what it looks like is going to happen, but if you remember the last time, we were going to get more funding, and at the very last, they went from 5% to 3%, which is a 3% limit we're receiving this year. So right now, but it looks like at the end of fiscal '19, we will be completely funded. So then that means in fiscal '20, whatever the funding amount is, as long as they don't say the guarantee amount's gonna go based off of FY '15 amount, which is a lot lower than FY '19's amount, then that's a pretty good assumption that, I doubt they're gonna go back that far in terms of what they say they're gonna give us. That's why we're using fiscal '19's amount as the guaranteed amount that we'll be using going forward.
But the governor is the person that makes that determination of, even once you hit the floor, of what that means?
The floor is, the funding calculation in terms of what you receive for state funding, our actual valuations is a piece of the calculation, but it's not the full calculation. They have a whole bunch of things that are part of the actual funding calculation, that's just one piece of it. We have seen in the last few years that they're trying to go towards the wealth piece.
Right.
It has a larger piece of the funding formula, and if that ends up happening with the new governor, then we could be in some trouble. Because right now, they haven't been using it to hurt districts. It can only help you, but they haven't been using it to hurt you. But if they do, then that could potentially cause some issues. So right now, in the forecast, I do have FY '19's amount starting for FY '20 and beyond. So those are definitely some things that I'll be looking at as those talks go. And what's nice about the way they do the budgets is when they start putting out early information, then you can get with, you know, your representatives and you can go down to the state house and you can talk and you can, yeah, discuss what is this will do your school district, and believe me, that happens every, every budget, districts will come, and that creates change, and then they'll put out the new version of their district order. So there's definitely room for us to go, if that's one of these things that would hurt us, we would actually have a say, we would go by left and down in Columbus, of how it will affect us. Whether or not that would change the outcome or not, I don't know, but I'm assuming there will be a lot of districts that would be in a similar position to us if they weren't to May and that calculation hurt us. So for, well, back in Homestead, no major changes at all in the forecast for that. The only change in the forecast for all other revenue is we did receive 110,000 from workers' comp as a refund from the 2015, 2016 premiums, excuse me. We weren't expecting that, that was great. So that did add a little bit of revenue to the forecast for that. And then, that's actually all for revenue, there's no major changes at all, so that was nice. For expenditures, the only thing that's changed from May to October was that we didn't settle, so obviously have to put in the forecast, maybe the change in agreements. So those are in there for maintenance. We do have a recommitment in '21 for salaries and healthcare benefits only. So currently, I still have the step in there for '21 and on, for, yeah, for '21 and on, I still have the step, and then I have a 1% go in there for staffing changes. So again, that will obviously change if anything happens in fiscal '21 and beyond with salaries benefits. We have an 8% increase in there as an average for health insurance increases. I have put in $100,000 savings for the stipend-ish, stipends, hopeful stipend savings for what we put in the certified and classified contracts. We've actually been getting a lot of feedback. I have received a few emails here and there the last few days, but I've received probably about 15 to 18 within just the last day or so, like the last two days maybe. So it's getting a lot of traction, people seem excited about it. So that $100,000 actually is probably around 11 to 12 people. So we're not expecting a lot, so if it does end up higher, then that will change that assumption, it'll actually then show more of the savings. So that has helped to keep those costs, because obviously, the, when you increase salaries through negotiations, then you have this retirement portion that's mandated and Medicare portion that will also increase as well. So those savings have helped keep that from increasing very much. We also have the tuition reimbursement that's been added to FY '19, that's part of the negotiated agreement as well. I added $55,000 a year for that. Purchase services, we have some savings in there built in. We have, do have an increase for college credit plus, about a $25,000 increase rate now built in for the year. We'll know more by the May forecast what ended up happening, because we do, only information we have so far is spring, we do not have summer or fall. So until we receive those numbers, we'll really know the full extent of what the increase will be over last year, but I'm anticipating based off of spring, our $25,000 increase. So I'll keep you updated on that. I have done some reductions, we moved salary and some benefits over to the part B grant, which is our special education. We did receive some increased funding for this year, we also received some restoration funds, but those are outside of that. Those funds, we actually did just our normal allocation for part B did increase about $150,000 from last year. I have a feeling it's based off of the way they're calculating it now, because we received $277,000 from our part B grant as what was called restoration funds, and what they said that the funds were for was that they had been calculating special education across the state incorrectly. So my assumption is, is not only did we get the $277,000, we all of a sudden got an extra allocation this year, which I'm assuming is probably going to be going forward. Not the 277, that was a one-time, but the extra allocation that we received this year is probably on the new way they're calculating it. So we were able to move the salary and some benefits over from the general fund over to that part B grant, which I was able to take out of the five-year, which is part of that reduction.
So there were money in that to keep her salary in there?
Yes.
Long-term?
Yes, so the restoration funds were a one-time fund, that's outside of that, but the actual increase in allocation, which shows the mechanism of how they calculated it, and we don't have an increase in students in how many students we have, so I'm assuming it's the way they're calculating that. But there hasn't been much information yet as to how they came up with those numbers, so that'll be something I'll be looking into, but it's not gonna be one-time thing, but that is our new allocation now, so.
That's what I was unclear on when I emailed you that.
Yeah. And then equipment, we did add $100,000 in capital needs for John for so much needed capital improvements that we are in process of, we're sure he's probably got, we've been figuring out as to what he's gonna use it for, but we are running under budget in other equipment within our budget. So basically, if you're donating, and you have $5,000 set aside for equipment and you don't use it for it, then obviously our cash flow is gonna show that we are under. So when you look at it across the district wide, our cash flows are showing that we're significantly under in equipment in those areas. So by raising his budget, $100,000 for his capital needs, and we're $80,000 under budget in other capital areas, we're really only using another $20,000 for capital needs. So it really probably won't affect much at all in the budget. And that's pretty much, we didn't really have a lot of changes, so it wasn't like normal. And I do have, in this packet, I did kind of briefly explain what is in each section. I know I do it every time, and so instead of me going through it once in every section, again, I just kind of hand it out for you guys, and it's also under Word docs too, if you need to do that. So I think that, one of the notable things, I guess, that is important, since I kind of just hit each, I highlight, the athletics piece too, that's where I show you more to pay for participation and more contributions that we did have, a savings of $15,000. I explained that in my email, which basically means instead of it, you know, being, you know, 365, it was lower than the actual forecast expectation. And then we do, I have added, since I originally sent everybody the five-year last week, I did add the unmet needs, John updated those for me, so this will be going in submission. I think that's important because as we move forward, we wanna make sure that we're explaining that we have significant unmet capital needs that are outside of the forecast because we do not have the money to set aside for these items currently. So if any of these items become an urgent necessity, then that's going to either cause the budget to go over, or it's going to have to start shuffling some things that he was planning on doing and not do because something else became an urgent necessity.
I thought we were in the process of replacing the one that's in the high school. I thought we were scheduled.
Yeah, that's the amount that's still not.
Right, we're doing $100,000 a year, and unfortunately...
That's not in the budget, though?
Well, $100,000 is, it is, but, like, so we started two years ago doing $100,000 a year, and even during that time, now it's more expensive to do because I can't even do a full side this year. So the unmet needs are growing because I still can't get around to the building enough to get those. So that's one of the reasons why I wanted to show that. We are doing the windows, but we, I was, if I had done them all last year, it would've been about $500,000, and now we're still at about $500,000 because the price of windows is going up quite a bit with, with the tariff piece. So it's that, that's the, one of the downsides to doing it a little at a time, because by the time you try to get done, it's, you're back up again. So that's why I wanted to, I still have that in there, because even though I'm planning to do $100,000 a year, I've, I'm already now another year behind.
And $100,000 isn't going to be able to cover as much as you were hoping for that for that year?
Correct, right.
With over half of what...
Correct, it's getting, it's getting more difficult.
So it's just making that go out longer and longer.
Yep, so, but that's why I want, I wanna keep it out there because it is a, it is an issue, because most of the leaking problems I have at the high school are window-related. Because we narrowed it down to that, because that's where the leaks are coming from, are the windows. It's not ruse, it's not flashing, it's the windows, and they're leaking down.
We've, yeah, you've talked about some significant window issues.
Yeah, they're really bad, that's...
And then also, in the packet, that's also online, I do still have the end-of-the-year cash balance reserve policy that we have adopted, which is 10% of our yearly expenditures. So nothing's changed here from May, it's been the same story, and we will be under, in FY '21, we will be under the 10% of yearly expenditure amounts. So we definitely need, obviously I've said this before, but we'll definitely need a levy within the forecast period. It's something like 2020 will be when we have to really have that levy.
Need the money by 2020?
Running a levy in 2020?
Running a levy?
Yes, in order to apply fiscal '21.
Maybe the first levy, May of '20, and then the following, the second one?
Right, in the fall, which would be, yes, the fall levy would run into fiscal '21. If we pass it in May, it would be fiscal '21, if not, it would be fiscal '22, let's see what happens.
One thing that I, and this seems like it's been on the agenda numerous, numerous times, and that's the capital unmet needs. So I think John does an amazing job with moving things around and figuring out how to make it work, because we always have hundreds of thousands of dollars, and even when we move the money around to put $100,000 over, and yet there was $80,000 that you figured out how not to spend as much. So I just, I appreciate that, and I think it does show that we're using the money as well as can be, as well as possible, even when you were handed extra money to spend if necessary. So, thank you.
Thank you.
We may need more headway in our investigation into the college credit plus, are we still working through that?
Still working through that.
Still working through that. So we've had some talks, I did express to Andrea some of the discussions that we've had about your finance, and there's some things that they're looking into on that front too, so we probably know something, but in a few months.
Yeah, no, I understand there's probably a lot of questions to answer, it's gonna take a lot of work, I'm just curious if there's...
You have to kind of...
Well, the, the big problem, I mean, it's, college credit plus would really push this community for a while, and so a lot of people are taking advantage of that. And when they take advantage of it, and many of our students go to schools that have the highest payment for college credit plus, it makes a big difference. If everyone went to Sinclair, or we utilized Sinclair 100%, it'd be a whole lot different story. There's a lot of, a lot of factors with that, a lot of factors with students wanting to leave and go places, a lot of factors where students are choosing to go there because of different personal reasons, because of different educational reasons. Andrea and I have been with the counselors at the high school, and even at the junior high, as well as building principals, we have quite a few things that we've already learned, and so, yeah, we've gotta delve into some more, but it is a complicated thing.
Yeah, no, I'm just curious, I know we've talked about how we stack up versus what we would probably consider comparable districts, and there are some discrepancies, and so I'm just curious as to...
To say the least.
What's driving it, so, interested to see what you find out.
Committee reports? Yeah, so what we have tonight is Scott Marshall, we're actually gonna give two district parent council reports.
For president, members of the board, we've had two district parent council meetings since the start of the school year. The first one was in September, and our latest one was just yesterday, as a matter of fact. So the members typically comprised, or the council is typically comprised of 12 members. Those members serve for two years.
Pardon the interruption. Would Mr. Faulkner please report to the front office? Mr. Faulkner, please report to the front office. Thank you.
Never changes until we... So there are 12 members on the council as far as parent representatives for each building go. Those members are allowed to serve for two years. So beginning this year, roughly half of the members turned over, so we had new parent members join. And so in September, we talked about the Century Garden at Clear Creek Elementary. And so in September, we talked about the sensory garden at Clear Creek Elementary. The four staff members from Clear Creek, Sarah Wilgais, Amy Parks, Dawn Williams, and Julie Cravender could not be in attendance because they were in class, so it's hard to get coverage, but we filmed a video presentation that they presented to the council to talk about the process of the sensory garden, all the help that's received, and the progress that's coming along with that. One of the things just to mention with the sensory garden, there will be a grand opening for the sensory garden at Clear Creek on Monday, November fifth, starting at six p.m. Small little presentation at the beginning, and then there'll be tours led throughout. And I believe that week, the board meeting is being held there as well. So that was September's board meeting. We also got into current questions about, we had some bigger programs that were introduced this year, Registration Gateway, Info Finder, which is the bus routing location system, as well as Lobby Guard. So with a lot of new programs introduced to the parents, we kind of wanted to make feedback from them, and so parents brought up questions that they had, and the administrators who were in there were extremely helpful in answering all that for that. So yesterday's district parent council meeting was exactly what you heard tonight from Andrea and Chuck, so they presented the district report card meeting, and a lot of good feedback from parents on there with questions about the process and this kind of stuff. So that's it. Any questions on the district parent council?
What has been the feedback on the Lobby Guard?
The Lobby Guard feedback has been pretty good. I think overwhelmingly, people are in favor of it. Some of the questions they had were about how extensive are the background checks, and just curious, do we need more, what would it take to get more? But I think once it was explained, and everybody was pretty okay, another thing that was addressed was, what do you do if somebody doesn't, you know, meet the requirements, and what's done from there? And so the administrators, which was brought up, administrators, what was brought up was kind of like a unified, what will we do? And so each building's kind of talked and came up with the same game plan, what will happen?
What was the determination of the level of, like, if there had been a situation that didn't involve a child of, that it was on somebody's record, would they still be allowed to come into school and screen, like, get through the screening?
Yeah, it's, it's just the sex offender databases that it checks. It does not check for other...
DUIs.
Thing DUIs or, or other things. That's why, but if we know...
That's almost like an add-on, right?
Right, if we, well, you can't add on to Lobby Guard, that's all they do is that background check. We can, but we can also red-flag individuals. If we know individuals that are not supposed to be taking kids, all that, we can red-flag them, because unfortunately, I used the...
Tina.
Tina, Tina drove at the high school as a guinea pig on that, because every day she was signing in just to make sure it worked, and so I red-flagged her that night, and so the next day she tried to log in, and it denied her to get, to get a badge. So, so you know it works, so we know the red flag works, because that was, I needed, I needed that surprise just to make sure.
That's a great point to do it.
And so that's why we could, so we can red-flag it, you can red-flag right away. So if someone logs in and you know that they're not supposed to be there, we can set a red flag in the back, and they may, we can tell them then, no, you can't get in, but next time it'll red-flag. So that's why we have to keep up on this diligent in making sure, because this, this program, that's all they do is, is the sex offender databases, but more than anything, that's where we just need to be diligent in making sure anybody that's not supposed to be there, we can red-flag and go from there.
And once it was implemented, which was what, two weeks?
No, August first, or October first, sorry, was when they implemented.
Couple of weeks ago, we had sent out communication to grandparents several days before, just kind of letting them know, these are finally all in place in the buildings, make sure to bring your IDs, you know, just to make that aware.
And once we get the, at Dennis and Five Points, we're getting door, the door locks on the inner doors, so that they'll have basically an actual entrance way to those two buildings. We'll be moving all five of them, Dennis Five Points, SI, Clear Creek, what's the word, SI, all out into the, into the lobby type area, so they have to scan in first before they're allowed into the office. But the high school, there's no way to do that with the current configuration, so that one will still stay near Tina, but the rest of them will be put out so that they'll have to scan in before we leave and let them into the office. It's just, I didn't want to do that yet until we got Dennis and Five Points done. Mobile Comm should be able to have that done before Christmas time, so probably over the Christmas break, we'll be moving those out to an ALCOV type situation. And that's that same thing, at that point in time, then we need to look at possibly getting more than one at Dennis and Five Points, but in the meantime, we'll have to direct everyone to the one door that there is one at.
So once it's between the doors, like at Dennis and Five Points, if there's an issue, does the person like knock on the door?
Well, they're, well, we have, right now, we have, we have the iPhones, which are, you know, the wireless communication or the wire communication, we'll move that on into the inside door where the Lobby Guard will be, so they'll be able to have that communication.
Communicate that.
Because right now, they could do it outside, but we'll move that inside when we get that, that other locks that's part of...
Very loud, very loud lights go off.
Yeah, lights flash.
Sounds really tough.
Pretty good avenue.
The next district parent council meeting, the members said, any questions?
Would you like me to send out reminders? I seem to be good at that with my emails.
I didn't see any for this one.
I clearly have that under control. I'm not sure how I did that.
All right, great, thank you.
Anything on the treasures report, Mr. President?
Okay, item four point one, here's approval for September two thousand and eight, financials. Two is on track, through September, on October. We receive a little bit of revenue, about four point four or four point five expenditures. We're still heavy, front and heavy on our supplies and cash flow, which is expected because we buy everything over the summer and beginning of the year, and then it'll taper off, and then those cash flow estimates will come back in line again. Same thing with benefits, because in the beginning of July, we do our HSA deposits, so we'll send those cash flows, we'll be a little out of whack, and then as the months go, those will taper off, and get that in line. So I've been this as I expected, so far through September. Our ending tax balance is right around fifteen million, although that will start to go down now, that we're not receiving tax advances, and we will be getting any more tax advances until February. So we'll receive about one point eight million or so from what I've been said in November, and then we have a regular receiving for state foundation month after month, and send this a little bit extra. So you'll definitely start to see the cash balance go down, and it affects us more and more every year as our cash balance as the district goes down, starts to make those December, January, and then February tricky. But everything else for September is right on track. And then four point two is our approval of the project forecast that we just went over. And then four point three is approval of a donation from the Feshan Club for sixteen thousand to help pay for Jersey's new coaches headset for football program. And we need to go to the district guidance department.
Is there a motion to accept four, one, two, four, three?
So, so. I just have one thing that I forgot to say with you, I should have presented that. You had marked down the textbook adoptions. It just makes me wonder if we should look in the five-year forecast at potentially increasing our, or moving money around to our technology budget, just because of the online books that we're doing, just because I keep hearing about more and more, especially at the elementary level, of the amount of time that students are supposed to be spending with different online programs, just to, the tools that are out there for the students, and even with the one to two ratios that we have, it still is a challenge to have everybody do the amount that we're supposed to be doing, just to make sure that we have all the tools, the technology there, so that we have, I just think there's so many amazing resources here, like, like Dearen just had to do the fifty states, and the teacher sent home what resource to do, and we did it at night, it was a homework thing. It was an amazing, amazing game that he did, and even the fifty states like that. And I just, I know they're doing a lot of stuff like that, but I just want to make sure we have the technology for the teachers to be able to do these things, so I just think that we should keep that in mind, possibly for the future, that as we're moving in our technology budget, and we continue to increase our, the online books that we're purchasing to consider potentially, and I don't know at the high school level where we're at, but I've heard that from some elementary teachers, just that stretch with the numbers that we have out there right now.
We're roughly at a two to one across the district, one device for every two children.
Right.
One of the things that we've talked a lot about with regards to elementary and the two to one, they would love to have one to one, but we really value that time that our children have with their teacher. So when our teachers are using the technology, we're recommending that more as a station teaching, so that you have a percentage of your class at the station working on the device, whereas another percentage of the class is working directly with their teacher. So when they're doing their instruction, we don't have twenty-six children all looking at a screen while the teacher's just circulating a room. We want that teacher interaction with the children, we also want them to have the tactile, where they're using books as well as they're using a device. It's a little bit different when you get into the secondary grades, but it's really important when, when we're in the primary grades that they learn those tracking through hands-on, hard copy as well, and that time with the teacher, as opposed to just taking a full room and putting them on a device.
I totally get that. It's not even just the, the full room thing, it's, there's so many different subjects that, that the instruction is, your students need to spend this much time on this program, that with the class sizes that we have, not that it's a huge class size, but to get even twenty-five kids through this program with, and have them spend this much time, that is just difficult, that with the amount of technology we have, unless there's some kid doing BYOT.
It is taking some coordination, you can jump anywhere with the element.
I don't know.
By all means, we feel like I'm monopolizing, but we are, we are having to do a lot more sharing of devices, so when, what you're speaking of, I believe, is mind play at the second grade level, where we're looking for a certain number of minutes every day for the children, and we have had to do some coordination of the schedules whereby if, if Chuck wants all of his students on at one time, and I want all of my students on at one time, we can't do that at the same time. So he takes his half, gives them to me when mine are on, I take my half, give them to them when his are on, so that that is working with our reading program. Jump in, please.
Right, yeah, the, the way the carts are set up in the elementary buildings, depending on the rotational model that they're using for that particular technology, they can either share and put every student on for a certain amount of time, and then switch them to the other teacher if that's required, or they have the ratio that they can do a station, like Andrea mentioned before. So that's what we've been working with. We're still working through the kinks, and I think the teachers are still working through the kinks with that, with the scheduling and how to make that happen has been not an easy transition for them.
Because it's still coming back to PTOs, that they need more technology, then I think we as a district need to step back and say, do we need to look at it differently?
Right, and we've, and we're, we're on a much better cycle now of replacement and increase than we have been ever before. I mean, this year, we bought a lot more, we were able to get a lot more Chromebooks out there in the buildings, and we got a lot more out of there that were, you know, older and not doing what they needed to do. So we're on a better cycle, it's not ideal, but we're on a better cycle, and we're improving every year with getting more devices out there and better devices, because we're on a three-year, three-year rotation now, which up before this year, we were, we were trying to do five, which was not a good. So now we're, now we're on a three-day rotation, a three-year rotation at two to one. So having a minimum of two to one, all grade levels. So we're doing better, and we're getting there, it's just we've got to get over the hump of, of the, this last few years that we were only a five, five-year rotation.
So that could have caused problems too, if there were some computers that weren't working because it was on a device.
Right, because they're not now, now they're, now we're on a three-year rotation, and we've gotten all those silver Chromebooks, which was the main ones that we're having a problem. Those should all be gone, we should not have any silver, if they have them, they're, because they're hoarding them somewhere where we can't find them, because we searched IMO this summer, we found, we found probably three hundred Chromebooks that we didn't know were out there this summer.
Oh, wow.
Yeah.
We got some hoarders.
But we got all of them.
And technology is getting cheaper. I spent some time with kindergarten and first grade teachers today, and they said, when we started technology in first grade, we bought iPads, you're talking about a five hundred dollar device in the hands of a six-year-old. And, and the teachers, they said to me today, Andrea, they're walking around with these in their strollers, we don't need to teach them to do this anymore. They come in knowing that, they're ready for the keyboard in first grade.
Correct.
So when we look at devices, we never would have put a keyboard in front of a first grader because they didn't have the skill set to do that. We were teaching them how to do this skill set that they're doing at two years old now. What we're finding is there are tablets that are available, we're looking at a tablet right now that is a Chrome tablet that runs roughly three hundred and fifty to three hundred and sixty dollars versus the five hundred dollars for the iPad that we were spending. So the different technologies, that also comes with stylus, so they're practicing their refined motor skills on that. So that's a, that's a thought for next year's technology purchases for that grade level.
That's great, that's great.
Okay. What's written about?
Anderson?
Yes.
Back.
Yes.
Salage.
Yes.
Stupi.
Epstein.
Okay, so now at four point five. So approval of donation for a donor choose project, owing five hundred and forty-three dollars and thirty-four cents for magazines from Mrs. Halligan, seventh grade of classes. Also approval of a donation from a donor choose project, owing three hundred and sixty-six dollars and seven cents for lightors and markers from Miss Walter's band class. Approval of a donation of two hundred and fifty dollars for consensus consulting LLC's three hundred robotics. Approval of a donation of an AED trainer and AED value at two thousand and eighty-six dollars from Jeffrey and Amy Turner. And approval of a donation of six hundred and fifty dollars for Pearson for the Educational Technology Department.
Okay, is there a motion to accept four, five, four, nine?
Sound good?
Second?
Any discussion? Where's the AED?
I think when I talked to Bronwyn, she said that it's going to be utilized in several different areas. I think we were down, we were down one or two, and someone happened to have one and said, we're not going to use it, which we didn't get, and she was like, of course.
Bronwyn, being the lead there, so we'll just stay with it.
Anderson? Back.
Yes.
Salage.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, we're ready for the Director of Human Resources.
Good evening, Mr. President, and there's the board. I would like to present to you on five point one, the personnel report, much smaller this month. I'd like to present five point two, camp burn volunteers. They have all gone, are there now, but these background checks will knock back by the time of our last board meeting. Five point three, we talked about this last time, to increase the sub-bus driver pay rate from fourteen fifty to fifteen fifty in work session, I'm asking for that vote. And then five point four is the adjustment of route times. They did these times in May, and now they've run them, and they've realized if they need more time or less time, so those are the accurate route time for each bus driver.
Is there a motion to accept five, one, two, five, four?
Sound good?
Second?
Mr. President, I'd like to add real quick a discussion. Every member of our team is valuable, but I want a special note of action item number one, the retirement of Homer Nightstep. Homer Nightstep has been the ultimate professional inside the classroom, outside the classroom, with our families and with our students. He is not only an Epic winner, he was also an Area Progress Council winner. Every student that entered this classroom was better when they left. He will be missed.
Anderson?
Yes.
Back. No, Salage?
Yes.
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 I was going to say, I wondered if you voted no, if any of you had a stat.
Yes, he's retired military?
Yes.
Yeah. He's getting sacked for retirement.
Yeah.
Finally, I'd like to present, to be, yes, I'd like to present five point six, which is our athletic report for October.
Is there a motion to accept five point six?
Sound good?
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Anderson?
Yes.
Back. No, Salage?
Yes.
Yes.
Stupi?
Epstein.
You're now ready for the Director of Special Education's report.
I think I'm going to get the award for the shortest one tonight again. I think I'm going to go for the award. I am just seeking approval for a continuation of a private placement contract, which will benefit a little bit less.
Ninety to accept six, roll.
Seven.
Second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Anderson.
Yes.
Fab. Blajic.
Yes.
Okay, now we're ready for the Executive Director of District Operations.
Mr. President, members of the board, for your consideration tonight, I've got four items. One is approval of an out-of-state trip for the high school junior ROTC, junior ROTC drill team.
You got your false teeth fogged.
I don't have any teeth, that's my problem. And this is their normal trip down to Florida where they always do great stuff for us and do well for our school district. Seven point two is the out-of-state trip for the Springbourn varsity competition cheer and that's the same thing they do all that work. And then they also, they spend a lot of money to be able to do that every year and we appreciate that. Seven point three is the approval to dispose of some items. We've got some vehicles, we've got some buses, we've got one more van. Those two vans are just, they're gone, the one you approved back in March and then this one. And then there's also a hundred and thirty-six desks that we have to get rid of from Dennis. That's the ones that they bought the new desk for and we don't have anywhere to store them. We don't have anywhere we could use them in the district. We've just got to get rid of them. And then seven point four is the approval for the, the new scoreboard agreement that we've got with side effects.
Is there a motion to accept seven, one, two, seven, four?
I have a question. Do we, so do we sell those desks?
Yes. They'll be going on Gov. deals just like the buses and the vans.
We're not just trashing them.
Yeah, we're not just trashing them, we're going to be trying to sell them.
I don't want them.
Which, I know, and you know, we, we had, I said this before, we had two classrooms full of those at JW still in the wrappers that we, that we could only get five bucks a piece for. If I get a buck for these each, I'll be happy, but they just don't, I mean, when you look at Gov. deals right now, most of the desks aren't even being bid on because.
Really?
Yeah. It's just, it's a hard thing to get rid of. Hopefully there'll be someone local that will need them, whether it's a.
What do the desks look like? Which ones are they?
They're the big ones.
Unicorn or the kidney-shaped thing?
They're, no, they're the square, they're the rectangular ones that have a huge bookbox.
Little keys desks.
Yes. And so they're the ones from Dennis and those are, those are even less wanted because they take up a lot of space. It's, it's a big desk. But if you know anybody, they'll be on Gov. deals. It's a great deal if anybody wants to buy it.
Thank you.
Okay. New motion. Get the motion.
Seven.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Anderson.
Yes.
Fab. Blajic.
Yes.
Good.
I'm staying.
We now move to the Board Member Reports, Comments, Questions, Announcements. We have no announcements from the administrators tonight. I have a couple, but we want to start with Mr. Goode.
Yeah, I'll just be very quick. Just a lot of thanks to Mr. Smith, Zoe, who I didn't get her last name, and Pat and this whole, I mean, what an awesome experience. I've never been to a career center before, so I was telling Mr. Blajic, it felt like walking into every room. It's like a new experience and I just realized how little about the world I know, hoping to know all these different experiences, but it was, the deal was fantastic, the tour was great, beautiful facilities, it was awesome. And then thank you to Mr. Williams and Mr. Smith. What more can you say? I mean, I'm so proud for us and I hope you guys are just as proud because the results are spectacular. So, well done to the districts. Amazing job.
I'm going to duplicate thanks to Zoe for the great presentation. We've never been disappointed yet when a student gets up and especially Career Center students, this is the second one we've had, and they just do a phenomenal job. And this is a great place. I was glad that, you know, going to college was brought up because so many people think you come here, you don't go to college, and that's not true at all. A lot of these kids go to college, a lot of them go out and make fifty-eight thousand dollars. Not all, but a lot of them go out and make shots. They all go out and have fine careers and it's a great thing, so I enjoyed being on it. And thanks to the, for the presentation, you guys did a great job. Thanks to the two of you, Superintendent Schrader and all the teachers. But I wouldn't comment at the time, but I'll just say that while I, I think any administrator would love to have their budget increased, official board member says, you know, increase your budget, but I love your explanation, which ties back into part of that presentation about one to two, what parents might come to, to any of us about and think that more is better. Like instead of one to two, it should be one to one. But I'm not willing to sacrifice that time with the teachers. And I think that is just as important as the technology. These kids are out of school and they're always on their phone or they're on their, I mean, this is, this is the one place where they do get one-on-one face-to-face communication skills with a teacher. I think, I think that's not to be lost as we move forward and everybody's in a hurry. And I understand that and I'm not, I'm certainly not, not the expert on that, but I think that's a great explanation. I appreciate that, what you said. Thank you.
And I agree. I agree everything with what Andrea said. To the teachers that I have heard this from, the time is not being lost. There is so much one-on-one time with these teachers. And that's where I feel like we have amazing teachers that do give this, that don't just throw computers in front for the kids. Because I think that even with what, I don't know what you're doing with the second grade with you referred to this, it sounds like it's really good stuff for the student. So that's where my point was just making sure for those tools that you feel like it's really important, that we have the tools there to make sure they do that. So not to just throw the computer in front of them all the time because truly, the people I've heard this from, that's why my ears perked up, was just because they are the people that you know are the ones that are your strong, strong teachers. So, yeah, it was exciting to see all of the report card stuff and, yeah, it was just, it was a great presentation, so thank you to that. To the Career Center, it was a cool thing. I told Charles about this when we were walking around. I ended the tour with my son this summer, so I had seen a lot of it hands-on and was just super, super impressed. But a neat thing happened a couple of weeks ago, because I work in early childhood education and a student came in, because I was giving a tour of where I work, and I looked at her and I said, "Springbourn?" And she's like, "Yes, this is Fab." And it was a student of ours from Springbourn who came through this program here, Esther Kessaday, and who had come to our board meeting her senior year and had presented to all of us of going through the program here and how positive it had been. She then went on to Sinclair, has put herself through the two-year early childhood education program at Sinclair and is deciding whether she's going to go on probably to a four-year degree, is putting herself through, is living on her own. I mean, just so much success and she found that thing that was a good fit for her. So it just shows that some students, it's great to go through Springbourn for thirteen years, some students it's great and then move on to whatever, and some students it's great to come here and then move on with life and your job and sometimes it's to go to college. There's so many options out there and it's amazing to have someplace like this for the students that a traditional thirteen years in a high school is not necessarily the right thing. So I think it's great having this here tonight and so that we all can see this for the board members that had never been here before. It's a great, great resource we have. That's all.
Yeah, I was one of those board members that had not been here before, so appreciate Mr. Smith for having us, Mr. Schrader for helping set that up. It's great, we talked a lot about some of the programs that are available. It's great to, great to see you in person, so I appreciate everything this evening that our hosts have provided us. I would agree with everything that's been said about the report card presentation. Again, it's just, it's a great success. It's great to go through some of the detail though and I appreciate that presentation, Mrs. Cook. And we just agree against it. There's a lot of great information in there and great to hear all the things that we're doing to keep improving those scores, so I appreciate that. Thanks again to all of the folks that donated. I was joking with Mr. Stuckey here that I asked, Dr. Blajic, if I could get in on that naming since I've got two kids, the places have been. But no, thank you to all those, you know, those generous donations and for all the work that went into getting those. And the last thing I'd say, just I know that there are kids at Dennis that are at Camp Kern this week and five points who were there last week and just wanted to extend the thanks to all of the teachers, the administrators that make that possible. I know it's a lot to ask them to be away from their families for a couple of days, but, you know, it's such a great experience for the kids and I just appreciate the fact that they're making that investment with their time and all the kids have a great, it's just a great experience for them. So I appreciate the time and effort that goes into that from the marketing chairs and our administrators. Thank you.
Wanted to thank the Warren County Career Center and, you know, for having us here. When are we coming back again?
Well, Mr. Smith and I talked about both of making this yearly page.
Just yearly?
All right.
Thanks Chuck and Andrea, you know, for your presentation, which I sent through a second time. I think I want to chub on this yesterday. Thanks Tara for your presentation, you know, for the five-year forecast, the donations too. You know, it's amazing how we, our community is able to help us in certain situations like this, you know, making the AED. I'm going to ask Bronwyn how to keep it.
Tomorrow night's the final home game, senior night, perhaps night. So, you know, busy, come out and watch back. That's it.
I got a few things tonight. In front of you are several things. First, the Ohio School Boards Association registration information for the Capitol Conference in November. Want to make mention of a few things. First of all, on Monday, the Student Achievement Fair will be taking place from ten o'clock until two thirty or ten o'clock till three that day. We, for the third year in a row, have two student groups go in. We've got five points this morning to speak about one of the technology activities they do. And we have the Project Lead the Way program from the high school that will be attending. That is a partnership with the Warren County Career Center. So not only is Springbourn, but the Warren County Career Center gets a little extra credit for that. That happens on Monday. Tonight, while we are here, administrators in both those buildings and the teachers are at the OSBA Fall Conference at Miami Valley CTC, but they're being recognized for being a part of Capitol Conference. Also on Sunday afternoon at two thirty, there's a presentation that some members of our team are going to be presenting. It's going to be about the leadership academy that we started last year. Andrea Cook, Tracy, Randy Barble and I are presenting at Capitol Conference. It was honored to be selected to do something like that. Also in front of us is a t-shirt. Thanks to some of the funds we get with our wellness program, every staff member gets a t-shirt, a different t-shirt each year and we wear those, well, those whose t-shirts fit. Wear them on Wednesdays and on Wednesdays as well this Wednesday. Bronwyn Patterson, I'm not sure why we're laughing back there. Bronwyn always sends a motivational email early in the day to get everyone inspired and most people wear those t-shirts with jeans that day and it's just a nice thing, so the t-shirts are there for you. Also Senator Steve Wilson has sent each one of you a letter. And that letter's congratulations, must be one of the twenty-eight schools in the state of Ohio to receive an A. Just a few more things, obviously, please take the time if you can to look at the white folder. The Warren County Career Center does have a lot of, we saw maybe ten percent of the programs here tonight. Everything else is highlighted in there and we really do thank them for the gifts this evening. All of you receive this Springbourn Augers magazine every month. We have seen, I think, an uptick of some great advertising, some great promotion of Springbourn students and staff. Scott Marshall has been meeting with them and there's going to be more regular things that are going to happen in there. But this month, I'm sure many of you already saw on page fifteen was a student spotlight, one of our freshman athletes, who's a two-sport athlete. And then we got two pages on eighteen and nineteen about the U.S. News and World Report as well as the junior ROTC student who received her pilot's license. So absolutely incredible there. The board president, vice president signed some certificates earlier. Since the cameras roll in, I won't share the secret yet if you want to ask afterwards. But Monday, the Chamber of Commerce has its annual celebration, its annual dinner gala. It's going to be held at the Miami Valley Gaming down in Monroe. And for the third year, we're going to be presenting a Friend of Education Award. Three board members will be there that night to assist us in handing out the award. And we keep it secret until that night, actually only a couple of people know and those that signed tonight, if you'd like to know, unless the cameras off.
I need a look.
And you don't know either, so you can ask later. I think other than that, I have something funny. So Friday night football, last home game of the year, right? Well, we're not only the Springbourn Panthers, but a majority of people in this community misses that. Our Ohio State Buckeye fans.
Oh, H.
I know. And so with that, we have people that know Ohio State Buckeyes. And two years ago, we had a special, two special guests that came to a football game. The Buckeye man and the Jim Tressel look-alike came and worked the crowd and by golly, those two are coming again Friday night. And you know what? The Buckeye man stopped by the board office the other day and surprised us. We did not know this was going to happen. But he was coming to the game and he slipped up on the website for the board members and he actually went ahead and made one with the letters in here and that says Charles.
So she's even personalized?
Yeah, personalized. You gotta wear it.
And I am so excited here, just a minute to hand one here. The business card is on here, so when you want to really thank him, man, with all the emotion you have.
This looks like emotion.